Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to this morning's study session for the Mesa City Council for Thursday, March 7th, 2013. Councilmember Dave Richens is not with us. Councilmember Higgins, are you on the phone?
Good morning, Mayor.
She is, okay. First item on the, oh, I guess this is a, excuse me, this is a special meeting of the Mesa City Council. Let's rewind. Councilmember Richens is still not with us, and Councilmember Higgins is still on the phone. This is a special meeting of the Mesa City Council, March 7th, 2013, to take under consideration an item for a special event liquor license application for the Usual Suspects LEMC Arizona Chapter. You want to just give a quick update as to why we're having a special meeting?
Yes.
Twenty-seven seconds, in twenty-seven seconds or less.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This was a request that came in on Monday, and we were able to accommodate, so we just got it on today's agenda for your consideration.
Good, thank you. Thank you for accommodating them.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Motion from the Vice Mayor, Second Councilmember Cavani. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Any requests to speak from the public?
No requests, Mayor.
Okay, have a motion adjourned from Councilmember Cavani, and second from Councilmember Summers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Now, we will call the order. The study session for the Mesa City Council for Thursday, March 7th, 2013. First item on the agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss, provide direction on the Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Program. Mr. Hirschberg and Ms. Huning.
Good morning.
Mayor, Council, good morning. Back again with an update and some follow-up from the last time we spoke to you about some of our current activity, how we've modified the schedule as requested to reprioritize some projects and move things up. As we start to move into more of the activity phase and I can return for updates, you'll start to see Beth with me more as our departments work side by side to keep these projects moving along, so go ahead and talk about the current activity, where we're at. Riverview Park, we're continuing with the lake construction. If you've driven by there, you still see a lot of dirt moving and things going in. Playground Equipment and Shade, as awarded previously by Council, are on order and in manufacturing. And then the final, hopefully, on the park side, construction contract award comes to Council on March 18th. Monterey Park, we've acquired one piece of property and continue at negotiation acquisitions on additional parcels out there to expand that location. We'll be installing some trees, bordering Monterey Street in late March to start creating some buffer there between the neighborhood and that location. And then we are going to work with the neighborhood and address some of the traffic concerns at that location and install, actually this week, temporary road and parking lot to move some of that traffic off of Monterey.
Mark, maybe just explain a little bit what that's going to consist of, how we're going to build that out.
Yeah, Dan, do you want to talk those details on?
Good road.
Yeah.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Transportation is going to get some excess millings from the roadway, and they'll be laying them down along the parkway to create a drive. And then the parking lot will be how many stalls?
I think it holds about eighty-five cars.
About eighty-five cars, so we'll just be doing that with staff. We can do that pretty cheaply, and we have some millings available pretty close, so it's a pretty good deal, I think.
Mayor and Council, that park today, the existing Monterey Park, has a very small parking lot. During the weekends, there's a tremendous amount of parking in the neighborhood, so since we control the property now next door, we thought we'd put together this kind of temporary parking lot to maybe provide some relief, an option to get some parking off of the neighborhood streets, so that's why we came up with this temporary solution.
Are you not getting no transportation public property assigned?
Oh, get those off, take those down? I guess we should, huh? No, I think we've started working on those things, yeah. We did have that up when we were doing the demolition phase, so.
There is a little bit more demo out there. Before those come down, we have to remove a septic tank that was there and stuff, too, so that's why some of that stuff remains.
Cool's gone, right?
Yep.
Do you have any plans to, since you're providing alternative parking, to maybe do some parking control in the neighborhoods at all, or just hope that the natural flow takes them off the street?
Yeah, I think actually the way the park is situated, if we're successful putting this temporary parking in and maybe putting signage up, it'll actually end up being a lot closer to the play fields, ball fields, where the activity is taking place. There's already a few vehicles that are already traveling across the fields to these locations, but I think we'll just encourage that to happen. I think that that should be moved.
See how it works, and then if it...
Yeah, we need to come back.
Good.
All right. Riverview Bike Ped Path, again, a million-dollar C-MAC grant was received to add to that project. We're at ninety-five percent design. There is some additional work that needs to be done.
Yeah, I wanted to add a couple of things. This project was originally part of the larger Voschelé project that the Corps of Engineers was doing in the Salt River. We've requested their plans, so the ninety-five percent is based on where the Voschelé project was. We need to now get their plans and kind of peel this portion of that project out of the Voschelé project so we can bid it. And then Dan's Department, Transportation, has been really successful at getting federal grants, so we've been awarded $146,000 to complete the design and a million-dollar federal grant to build it. With the federal money, there are different requirements attached to that, so we need to take some time and go back and get all the steps in for the federal processes as well as we go forward. So the ninety-five percent is really based on the Voschelé projects, but we still have to do some additional design and then bring it into compliance with the federal grant requirements.
The Mesa High Aquatic Center, we continue to move forward with that. The RFQ for the designer will be released on March 13th, next week, and the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Mesa Public Schools is currently under review by the city Attorney's Office, then will be passed over to the school district for their review. And then I also continue those discussions with the school district on coordination in terms of athletics and those type of things on those programs that'll occur there. Federal building, the RFQ for architects is currently on the street and due back in two weeks, March 21st. Project Lead, Tom Wilson, is continuing to coordinate the activities for that location with Lisa Anderson, the CEO of the Mesa Historical Museum. Pioneer Park, RFQ for the designer will be released within the next thirty days. Medina and Haas, that location, the frontage street work is under design now. Sports Complexes, West Mesa in particular, Kleiman and the Mesa Education Center, formerly Powell, the RFQ for the designer will be released within forty-five to sixty days. On the same RFQ will also be for Mesa Junior High Sports Complex, so we can start meeting with stakeholders and getting their involvement with both designers involved in one location.
What is the status, I mean, both those, the properties actually owned by Mesa Schools, so where are we in that process?
Mayor, we'll be drafting, we're drafting the IGAs now for both of those locations as well, so those will be reviewed by the city Attorney's Office in the next couple of weeks here, and then sent over to the school district for those, for their review to agree on the IGAs for long-term lease at this point in time.
And on Mesa Junior, just to make sure, I guess my fear is that all of a sudden somebody in the Mesa Schools who isn't involved in this process orders a back, orders something to go, start demolishing buildings that we decide may or may not be in there. Is that all being coordinated to make sure that our thinking is in line with their thinking?
The conversation that I've had with the superintendent is that they are waiting for us to identify which buildings that we want...
So go through our design process, basically?
Right, and, well, that's why we're doing the code assessment, then we want to come back to Council and say, just, you know, say, here's the condition of buildings and what, if we were to keep them and if we were to renovate them in the future, what that might require, so we can make an assessment. And really, the determination what the school district is waiting for from the city is, what they've, what the superintendent told me is, the school district has no interest of any of the facility improvements out there, and they are, will be responsible for the demolition and environmental remediation of the site. We just need to tell them which ones, which of the facilities, buildings...
To not demolish.
To not demolish.
Okay, and they're going to wait till we tell them that before they start...
We want to, yeah, so we want to do this code assessment, then come back to Council and kind of lay it out and maybe talk about a plan.
Yeah. Just want to make sure, because in the past, there's been certain people below the superintendency that have made comments and everything, and just want to make sure we're in sync.
We believe that's been clarified.
Okay.
Mayor, as Mr. Brady alluded, those conversations continue, Lord, not just between Chris and Dr. Callen, but also with staff below.
Okay.
And myself, directly, both in facilities and athletics.
Okay.
Buckhorn Bass Property, again, the city appraisal is completed. We are still in negotiations for the property acquisition with the landowners. Mr. Boucher was successful in receiving a Phase II environmental grant in the amount of $50,000, so we're working with the property owners to, for an access agreement to go on there and conduct that study.
And we're going to visit about that, as opposed to parting executive session, to get an update on that.
And then the Downtown Urban Plaza, I know over the last two weeks, a number of members of the community as well as staff have been on campus with ASU, meeting with the placemaking Mesa students and participants. I was there last night, meeting with them in a focus group to discuss plans for that location. And then planning continues to work with, coordinating with consultants to review the work being done by those students and design concepts for the early fall of 2013. Summary, we've kind of put this project schedule together for you to review. Everything in blue is real estate or land acquisition. Yellow things are design, and the green items are construction, so you can see where we've consolidated and adjusted some of those things to begin. A lot of that's ongoing right now and discussions internally of where we're at. Every project through best staff has been assigned a project manager, and we continue to review those RFQs as quickly as possible. Be happy to answer any questions on that page if there are, otherwise I'll go to the next one and show you that schedule. Again, blue is land acquisition, yellow, design, and green is construction. That, we'd be happy to answer any questions if there are.
Any questions for Mark or Beth? Guess not. Okay, thank you. All right.
Next item is to hear a presentation, discuss, provide direction on the updated city's general plan. Mr. Wesley.
We're here this morning to give you an update on our progress with the general plan update, let you know some of our current thinking of where we think we want to go with the plan as we work on the update, as we prepare to start going out to the public here in the next few weeks through late March and April, to get their thoughts and ideas on where we're going. So today, I want to give you just a little bit of background on some of the things that we've been doing over the last six months, and then specifically, we're going to be talking to you about our ideas for some focus of the plan, how we think it might be organized a little differently than what the current plan is, and the idea of using character types, character areas, instead of the more specific land use designations that we've had in the past, and get your direction on those things. So over the last six months or so, we've been out to quite a number of community events that are going on around the community where we know people are already there, and so we have a booth, and we can pass that information and give them our survey and ask them for their comments and get their ideas and feedbacks, let them know about what we're doing. Then we've also targeted several groups in the community that we've reached out to and gone to various meetings of the Chamber, Downtown Mesa, Developers Advisory Forum, some of those groups, so we can get information out and use some newsletters and those types of things with various groups. And we've established our website so that people can go out again at any time and find information in our user voice site where they can give us comments and feedback. And so through that, with the survey that we've had out, we've gotten over a hundred and fifty of those back, and we've been able to look at the results of what's coming out of that. And as you can see from the results, strong support for maintenance of our neighborhoods, for our open spaces, healthy living environments, the economy and jobs, the cultural amenities, a lot of those things, and a lot of strong support for those things that we've already been talking about as a community that are important. We also asked some open-ended questions. Vision, your Mesa in 2040, what would you want it to be? So my Mesa in 2040 is, and so this is kind of a summary of a variety of comments that we got, we've got well over a hundred comments so far on these things. And again, a lot of interest in the parks and employment, active downtown, innovative and creative things and jobs and those types of things. So again, fairly good consistency amongst those variety of things. And so with that, with these things, the council strategic initiatives, the I-Mesa issues, before, we've brought to you the draft vision statements, and these all kind of support one another. And then with those, and working with the Plan Advisory Committee that we have, we've started to formulate what we think is a little bit different approach for our plan, the current plan that we have. Nice document, well-worked, it focuses very strictly and directly on the state statute requirements. I think maybe there's a little bit better way, a little bit more creative way that we can do that in the future, really focuses on the needs of the city. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ellsworth to kind of talk about that and where we're picturing going.
All right, good morning. As we focused on what the vision would be, as we look forward into the future, we've kind of looked back at the city of Mesa itself, what we've grown up as, as a sprawling boom bar, mainly grown up as a bedroom community. As we're looking forward and as we've talked to the community and to our advisory committee, one of the words that's come out is making Mesa a little bit more recognizable. We want to transform the city into what we've termed so far as a 21st century American city. People are looking for the vibrant, stable neighborhoods, a diverse economy, and a great public spaces and cultural amenities where they can enjoy their lives. As we're looking at the outline for the plan, we're setting it up in a way that we have the introduction, what the plan is, what our general vision is, and then we're breaking it down into that section of how we transform the city, and breaking it into those three sub-areas. We want to have a discussion on neighborhoods, a discussion on the economy, and a discussion on public places. The state statute requires that certain elements are in the general plan. If you look at our current general plan, all of those elements are separated out into separate sections, and that's how, as reviews come in, that's about how it's been treated. As we're going through and we're redefining this outline and redefining our general plan and how it's used, we're actually collaborating all of those elements together. We've, and as we've met with certain divisions, we've talked about, departments and divisions, we've talked about each of these areas and how we can more fully bring forward this vision, and how do we become that recognizable city in the future. Those three subsections, again, as I said, we're focusing on the great neighborhoods, the stable economy, a diverse economy, and the great public spaces. As we've gone through and we look at these, and as we, as we look at the outline, we are tying each of these back to each of these strategic initiatives, I-Mesa topics, and which state statute elements those provide. We're also beginning to outline those key issues under each one of those sub-areas. Let's see, for example, in the neighborhoods, where we want to maintain those neighborhoods that are unique and have a great character. One of the things that we've found as we've gone out in the community is people are trying to figure out ways to connect not only with cultural amenities and shopping, but how to connect within each communities themselves. What we've found is people don't feel that there's great connectivity between even their adjoining neighborhoods, so we're looking at ways that we can, what we've termed as repair sprawl, so we've got that going on inside of that area of the general plan. The diverse economies, where economic development comes in, we're focusing on a lot of those strategic areas of the current economic plan. We'll be focusing on education, healthcare, and focusing on the regional opportunities that Mesa has. Again, we've focused in on those I-Mesa topics and the strategic initiatives, and this will fulfill a lot of the elements within the state statute. And going along with the previous presentation, as we've gone around, public spaces and cultural amenities within Mesa are continuing to be very important to people. As we bring these three elements together, we believe that these will be the things that will create those vibrant, livable areas, things that are very recognizable as being Mesa. Not only recognizable as being Mesa, but recognizable as being in which portions of Mesa that you're actually in. Again, the final portion of that would be more of the administrative section of how we provide the public infrastructure and what our plans are for providing basic services and quality services to the rest of the city. In the implementation, we're also looking at the general plan amendments. Currently, the current general plan sets forth what's major, what's minor, and as we're looking at the plan itself, and as it grows over the next ten years till the next update, what are the procedures and processes for how we implement changes or updates to that general plan? And as we're looking at this, one of the major elements of the general plan itself is that land use map. The land use map is probably the most visible portion of the general plan. As John's mentioned, our current land use map is very specific. I've had several developers almost talk to it as a pre-zoning map. It's very specific as to which densities will go where. What we're looking at is defining character in Mesa and defining those into character areas. As we're defining these character areas, we're very specific in how that looks and feels. Each of these, we've broken down into separate subtypes. We're not going through those today, we're still working those out, but if you're in a neighborhood, well, let me go through them first. We're identifying neighborhoods, neighborhood village centers, transit corridors, urban corridors, community commercial centers, employment, specialty districts. Each of these have their own character. Basically, the majority of Mesa is a neighborhood. As we go through the neighborhoods, we're developing subtypes that correspond with those areas of Mesa that are unique now, the Lehighs, the desert uplands areas, the citrus areas, defining what neighborhood development looks like. What are the opportunities for those neighborhood-oriented type shopping? The basic stuff that you'd see on the corner. As you move up in that, the neighborhood village centers are those areas that would be slightly, slightly larger, the opportunities for people to go to a neighborhood corner market, and not only just to be the market, but to be an area that they could connect and gather as a neighborhood themselves. And stepping up from that, if you go into the community commercial centers, that's the next one, we're looking at the service areas of those. Where are those located? How are people connecting to those? Those mainly today are connected through automobiles. What are the opportunities in Mesa to start utilizing those multi modes of transportation that are coming through, connecting neighborhoods to those? The idea is to create these vibrant centers throughout Mesa where people can feel that stronger sense of community. And, sorry, I've got dry mouth. And as we looked at that, you know, most plans look at where do we live, work, play. And as we look at the work, we're also identifying the employment districts. We've broken those down into employment and specialty districts. Specialty districts would be those places where there are business parks, or college campuses, or healthcare campuses, things that are very specific in their orientation towards the employment types. And then there are the parks and open spaces. We've taken a, taken those elements, and we've drafted a very draft plan of what that would look like in a map format. It's very toned down from what our current general plan map looks like. We're hoping that through this, we can, I didn't go into the transit corridors. The transit corridor is another character type that we're actually promoting through this type of outline. There would be a very...
This is just the base map, right? This is going to evolve from this, so it's just the working platform?
Correct, this is the working platform. What the idea would be is you drill down into development, and as you, as we have a specific development within the city, we would go down and we'd actually set forth the framework of how we review those. There's a framework and a context that goes in underneath this layer.
But also, it's a first draft, give us something to start talking about. Are those the right transit corridors to have on there? We're not sure, but it gives us a place to start and evolve. Are the commercial centers the right size and shape for where we want them? We'll get some feedback from the public as we continue to go about this, and we know this map will evolve as we continue to talk about it, but this, again, gives us a place to start.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Higgins.
Yeah, thank you. Just to follow up, so we're going to be removing all the, like, land use kind of thing when it comes to low-density development or multifamily, that type of thing, or will it eventually be a layer on top of it?
We are preparing a second layer, Councilmember Higgins, below this, that does start to get into that little bit more detail, and particularly in terms of the neighborhood areas. We are defining character types for desert uplands, for agricultural areas, for citrus areas, traditional neighborhoods. I think we have manufactured home parks as another option in there for kind of character types we have within neighborhoods, so there'll be some of that further distinction that does go beyond this.
All right, thank you.
As you're looking at this map, one of the areas that we're still working out on, if you look at the General Motors, DNB property in Eastmark, we've marked it as mixed-use community. That's what our current general plan designation is, where we're continuing to work and draft what the proper designation would be for those type of areas where developments, develop specific community plans for development. One of the things that we have discussed with the Planning Advisory Committee as recently as yesterday is the ideas of the urban cores. And they were very concerned and wanted us to really emphasize downtown being separate from what may be designated as other separate cores. Currently, we know that there are planned urban-style cores at Elliott and Ellsworth and more down by the airport, and Ellsworth and Ray Roads. So those are some issues that still come up. We're still very much in the draft and discussion stages of how this is working out. We're presenting our general framework and the definitions of these character types to get some feedback from the council on the direction that we're going. Where we're going from here is, we're continuing to do neighborhood outreach, we're continuing to go to community events, get some feedback. We are, in the last week of March, in the first two weeks of April, we're specifically going out to the six separate I-Mesa Village areas, presenting these concepts to people, getting feedback, educating the public on what the general plan is, what their role is in that, and that we're heading towards that November 2014 ballot date, and that we will need them to be attentive to so that we can have this passed. We will be back in front of the council for an update in June or July, hoping to have our first draft done in October of 2013, and the second draft by 2014, and hoping to have this in front of the council by next spring.
So with that, comments, questions, direction in terms of the character areas and the format and focus of the plan? Are we heading in the right direction? Do we need to be doing something different?
Questions, comments?
No, I like, Tom, when you start talking about connectivity. I mean, I don't know that people realize that the net impact or the result of having this general plan that really was almost like a zoning map is that we actually not only pushed people apart, but that we didn't allow people to interact in many ways. You know, we created these special zones that you couldn't walk between, there was no gathering, there were very little, the gathering places were retention basin, maybe in a neighborhood. We didn't allow any other way that people could interact or could gather, even within their own neighborhood, by the fact that we've relegated through our planning those kind of gathering places to specific places that you had to drive in a car to get to. I like the approach of allowing living to happen, and we got away from that, and I like us going back to the way cities naturally developed. You know, even Mesa, you go to the downtown area and what Mesa, how Mesa opened, Mesa's no different than the other city or town, where activities naturally segregated and they went to places, you know, there was some planning involved, it wasn't just happen chance, but they also allowed people to gather in the neighborhood, little store, coffee shop, or clubhouse, or whatever it was, they allowed those kind of activities to intermix, and for some reason, we survived and even thrived, and we moved away from that, where all of a sudden, we pushed everything to an arterial and to an intersection where, and then we wonder why people don't get together very often. So I like the approach of going back and having more of a conceptual or value-driven plan as opposed to just the stark lines.
Councilmember Cavani.
Thank you. I like the approach you're taking. I particularly was struck by your term sprawl repair, and I think that is kind of a wonderful way to encapsulate what we need to do in terms of neighborhoods, and I think it really sends a message both to neighborhoods and developers and other entities that we work with, that's the goal that we want to work towards in terms of making those neighborhoods more pedestrian-friendly, having the connectivity to their local businesses or to their other neighborhoods, because, again, I remember so many zoning cases where people were, you know, wall that off, we don't want those people in my neighborhood, but, you know, they all go to the same school. And considering all the sprawl that we've had, I think it's a great, great way to focus on the great neighborhoods that we have. I like that term. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Summers.
As we go through this process, I don't want us to lose sight of all the great work that you've done over the last, like, the six years that I've been here, from the Gateway Plan to Central Mesa, West Mesa, transit-oriented development, we have a lot of smaller plans, and even the one for the DNB property. We've put together, brought forward a lot of great ideas on how to repair that sprawl, how to add that connectivity, that... ideas on how to repair that sprawl, how to add that connectivity that we're talking about. And we should bring those off the shelf and lay those out in these community meetings when we're talking about the city as a whole. Because I think there are some ideas in those plans that we may want to put in the general plan as a whole for the entire community, and some we may want to just take for other smaller sections within the community. But we should be bringing those plans in and talking about that, because a lot of that work has already been done. And it's really good work.
Yes. Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Summers, thank you for that. And that has been one of the driving forces behind what we're doing now. We've looked at what we have done recently in terms of the sub-area plans and what some of those common themes have been, and trying to pull them up to the city level. And one thing we kind of didn't touch on in this brief overview is one of the things we are doing with making the general plan, or general, is we'll be more specifically referencing the sub-area plans. So those become that more specific layer of detail for a given area when we really can be specific. It's hard to do that when you're doing the general plan. But it will create a greater connection between the general plan and the sub-area plans.
Yeah, true. But it's, you know, in some areas, we talk about these transit corridors. We have some opportunity for that vertically integrated mixed-use transit-oriented development type of activities. But when you only talk about the West Mesa plan, we have to bring that and make it a little bit more general to the rest of the city where those transit lines are.
Thank you. Good. Thank you. Next item to your presentation, discuss 2013 state legislative update. Mr. Butler. And Ms. DeWitt. Got it right, didn't I? She didn't even notice. She did not even notice.
She's gotten so comfortable with it now.
She's, yeah, she's so used to being a DeWitt instead of a Culver that she just passed by without-
It's just making sure it's stuck.
Yeah.
We're good.
Well, Mayor, Council, good morning. I know that you all have been waiting to hear what our good friends at the legislature have been up to this session, dealing with cities and towns. And what we'd hope to do, too, is come to you at a time when the bill introduction deadline has passed, so that we know somewhat what the universe of bills will look like for this session. As always, with some of the technical manners that bills can be introduced through strike-everything amendments, there'll be upcoming bills that we can anticipate, depending on certain situations that will arise, or news stories that legislators will read in the paper, and then decide that they want to run a bill to address something like that as the session progresses. But we feel like we have an understanding now of the scope of what the legislature is mainly looking at this session, and wanted to walk you through that. We're 53 days in to the legislature at this point. It's the first regular session of the 51st Arizona Legislature. Still a Republican majority in both chambers, but no longer supermajority this year, much tighter margins, in particular in the state senate, which has already allowed, has played out in some dynamics with certain members in the majority voting with the minority to kill some legislation. So that poses more of an interesting political dynamic at the legislature this year. 1,145 bills have been introduced, and about 190 that we're monitoring with potential impacts on the city of Mesa. The governor presented her budget soon after her State of the City, excuse me, State of the State address this year. Currently, the state's working under an $8.5 billion budget. This includes the final year of the special one-cent sales tax. Next year, as we move into FY14, the governor's proposal calls for additional increases of about $350 million of new spending on top of the current budget year. So about $8.9 billion this year is her recommendation, and flat spending going into the next year after that of also about $8.9 billion.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
Just trying to do a little bit of math there. How is that uptick in spending financed? Because it looks like you're losing, the one-cent sales tax is what, $700, $800 million? And you're looking at $400 million in increased spending with a $313 million surplus. Is that a surplus in the current year? Is that the state of the reserves?
That's the state of the reserves.
So a $400 million drawdown, a $400 million uptick. So you're still $800 million short.
Yes. The governor's, well, there's two things at play. The state has experienced some pretty robust revenue gains over projections. So they're experiencing, in many regards across the overall budget sector, a recovering economy that was ahead of what their budget estimates were. So that counts for some of the additional revenue. The other part is from federal funds. Part of the governor's plan on Medicaid-
That includes Medicaid?
Yes, includes additional money that the federal government would bring, that the state would draw down from the federal government. So that also includes some of the-
Approximately, how much would that be?
I'm not sure. I can get that number for you.
Okay. It's got to be a lot, though, because, you know, if we're almost $1 billion short, it looks like, without some significant growth in the economy. I know their income tax has, which is different than ours, because most people, I think, are experiencing sort of what we're experiencing, flat or relatively modest increases in sales tax. But I know the state, their income taxes, has gone up quite a bit.
That's correct. I think that's been, and I'm not sure if others could speak more to that, but that's what my understanding has been, part of the increase in revenue that wasn't quite accounted for. It's been more robust than they projected. And so it's provided additional. We have yet to see a legislative budget yet, but all indications from Senate President Biggs has been that they expect flat spending. So I expect most of the difference would be about a $300 million gap between what the legislature will propose and what the governor has proposed. So we-
And we peaked out in spending, what, $10.5 billion?
It was over, yes, it was over-
It was over $10 billion. So we're down $1.5 billion, $2 billion from the peak spending.
Right, exactly. The governor, the good news is that the governor's FY14 budget proposal does not include any transfers of shared revenue or state-collected sales tax. The diversion of her funds, that is an annual diversion, remains flat from the proposal of last year at $39 million. So they're not-
And her fizz?
Highway user revenue.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor.
Reminds you of what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's right. So why don't we spend a little time there talking about the most controversial bill for cities and towns, and the one that has the potential to have the most dramatic impact on us, is House Bill 2657, which is the legislative embodiment of the governor's TPT, Transaction Privilege Tax Task Force Reform Committee. So the governor assembled a task force over a year ago to look at TPT reform and come back for, provide recommendations on how we can simplify our system in Arizona to make it, quote unquote, "business-friendly," and to streamline the efficiencies on how businesses in our state pay their taxes, how they're audited, and how they interact with state and local governments. The governor's task force came back with 10 recommendations, of which the League of Cities and Towns agreed with seven of those 10. And we believe, most importantly, of those agreements on seven of the 10, it would bring us into compliance with the Marketplace Fairness Act in Congress, which would allow us to, allow Arizona and cities to reap any additional revenue that might be, that might exist when online retailers are brought into compliance with state and local sales tax compliance. And so that's one of the major points of the governor's task force, was to make sure that the state could be a beneficiary of that legislation, which requires compliance at the state and local level. And we believe that the recommendations that the Cities and Towns agreed to, most importantly, allow the state and municipalities to become beneficiaries of that. But there were three major areas of difference that we had with the governor's recommendation. The governor's task force called for, the majority of the task force called for, the state to take over all collection of TPT. So right now, Mesa is one of 18 cities in the state where we collect our local sales tax locally. We do that in-house with city employees, that businesses file their sales tax with the city, and we collect that as a city. And most of the larger cities in the state, with the exception of the town of Gilbert, do that. So those, 18 of 91 are self-collecting. But when you look at the population of those 18 cities, it represents the vast majority of Arizona's population, with the city of Phoenix, and Scottsdale, and Glendale, and others making up those 18 cities. The second component of that is the governor's task force called for the Department of Revenue to, I'm sorry, and on state collection, the Department of Revenue would be the single point of collection for all sales tax. So cities such as Mesa would be excluded from collecting that TPT locally, and it would all be done through the Department of Revenue, who would then remit our local sales tax back to us after it had been collected through the Department of Revenue. Second component of that is state auditing. Right now, we do audit businesses within the city for compliance with paying their taxes, making sure that they are complying with our local regulations and tax structure. This would take away our ability to audit for the city, and to have auditors to perform that function, and would put that on the Department of Revenue completely. So only the Department of Revenue would be able to audit businesses in the city for both state and local compliance with TPT. And then third, which is generate, of course, a lot of interest in media reports, has been the governor's proposal to do away with the construction sales tax, prime contracting category in our TPT code, and instead replace that with a point-of-sale. So right now, as someone does a construction project, they're building a home, that's not taxed until the home is finished. And if someone's purchasing the home, they pay taxes on the final price of that home. And then that's remitted to the city and to the state through a levy called the construction sales tax. Under the proposal put forward by the governor, each step of that home-building process, for example, would be taxed. So if you're buying windows right now, those aren't taxed individually. You have a tax exempt status as a contractor for purchasing those materials. But under this proposal, it would be taxed at each step of the process. But that also means that the totality of the project would not be taxed. A lot of those materials come from out of state. There's a lot of complexity about communities in Queen Creek, for example, where there's a lot of construction activity going on. Construction sales tax represents a huge portion of Queen Creek's budget. But Queen Creek does not have lumber yards. Queen Creek does not have places where those transactions are actually occurring. So even though Queen Creek, and Mesa, and Gilbert, and others who are still experiencing a lot of growth during this time are forced to deal with the ramifications of that growth by infrastructure and the other things that we are on the hook for that come along with construction, we wouldn't reap some of the benefits that come along with the tax revenue generated by that construction. So it would move out of state, it could move out of city into counties, county islands. There are other, there's a lot of complexity to this that by moving to a point-of-sale could come in a huge detriment to cities and towns. We've estimated that the impact to the city is somewhere around $10 million a year if this were to be implemented. They've, the governor is proposing a delayed or phased-in impact, I believe in 2015, is that right?
Correct.
In 2015, to allow us time to adjust. But the concern is that when you're taking $10 million right out of our ability to, out of our general fund, that's a huge impact to the city. And I'm sure the mayor and some of you will want to discuss different aspects of that component of it. But this has really been pushed primarily by the Home Builders' Association of Central Arizona and a few others, who see this as an opportunity to take the burden off of their industry and put it onto the individual retailers that's there, or the individual subcontractors and others that are part of their industry to pay taxes at the time of the point-of-sale. So the mayor has been involved in some discussions with the governor directly and her staff, trying to work out a compromise on this. There's been a small group of elected officials from cities who have been trying to work on a compromise that would still meet some of the objectives of the governor's task force, which would allow one point of remittance for businesses in the state. Cities and towns have proposed an online portal. That was actually signed into law by the governor last year, that would allow a single point of payment, no matter how many jurisdictions your business may operate in. You would go to one portal, pay one form, have one license, and all electronically would that TPT be diverted to Chandler, and to Mesa, and to Phoenix, or whatever the cities may be. So we believe that online portal simplifies for the taxpayer, for the small business owner, or for the large complex business like an Intel, or anyone like that. There's one point of payment and one remittance, which is the goal of what the governor's task force called for. On the audit provisions, Cities and Towns have countered with a proposal that would only allow one single audit for businesses, but that would be done in conjunction with the state and cities. So that, as a business, you aren't going to bear the burden of multiple audits by multiple jurisdictions. You would have one audit, but it would be coordinated with the state and with cities, and would allow cities to have the certainty that our interests with local businesses are still being taken care of, while at the same time ensuring that the business community is not suffering under the burden of multiple audits by different jurisdictions.
Councilman Kavanaugh?
I just have a question. I know they're proposing the single audit, but as I recall, there was no funding for any additional positions at Department of Revenue. Is that right or wrong there?
That's correct. The governor's budget proposal doesn't call for any additional auditors.
As a matter of fact, when we pointed that out to the governor's staff, not only was there no budgeting, but there was, we asked if there was any plans or commitment. And they would not commit to any increase in funding or staffing. So they have no plans to increase staffing.
Right. And-
And, you know, I don't know, but it seems like if you increase the audit scope and you keep the level of staffing the same, it seems like the amount of auditing will probably go down, yeah, if you reduce the number of auditors. But, yeah, somehow that doesn't seem to work, but-
And that's exactly, of course, the concern.
Well, the other concern is that, is that the emphasis at the state level, and this whole thing, has really evolved with almost a total disregard, is what happened in the cities, has been on multi-jurisdictional, big business, multi-jurisdictional. I mean, they'll trot out a small business that does business across city lines, but mainly it's big business with multiple locations that does business in multiple cities. We don't have any perfect breakdown, but I would guess that of our 25-plus-thousand, or however many it was in the last sales tax, I got to imagine that the vast majority of those are single-location, doing business primarily or exclusively in the city of Mesa. They don't cross lines. You know, it's a store, it's a tire shop, it's, you know, whatever. It's a retail outlet that has a location and does business here. Those type, I would imagine, under a state-run auditing scheme, would rarely, if ever, be audited. And in our city, of course, we look at the entire universe of businesses that operate here in Mesa. So that's another big concern, is that the state will focus on what they focus on now, which is multi-city, multi-jurisdictional businesses. And yet, the vast majority of our businesses aren't multi-jurisdictional. So, and we've brought that up to them, but that doesn't seem to have a whole lot of merit-
Right.
-in their mind. So that's a huge concern of ours. Because, you know, if you're not going to audit, you're not going to have compliance. It's just that simple.
Correct. And to, Mayor, to your point, to Councilmember Kavanaugh's point, that has been the overriding concern of Cities and Towns, has been our 80 years of experience under our current system, and also understanding the limitations at the Department of Revenue. During state budget cuts over the last several years, the Department of Revenue has taken a dramatic hit. And I think you can always tell whenever the good times and the bad times of the state, because additional funding goes in and additional funding goes out to the Department of Revenue. And some would question whether that's smart business to take resources out of your revenue department at a time when you're, you know, trying to bring in more revenue and- department at a time when you're, you know, trying to bring in more revenue and have compliance with revenue standards. And as cities, we're just concerned that both from the administration standpoint of being able to handle and to be able to process the collection of all of our TPT locally, now moving all of those functions for millions of Arizona residents into the Department of Revenue and ensuring that we get our payments in a timely manner and that we have an efficient system like we, we believe that we have today in the sense of the collection, that that's a real concern from a resource standpoint at the department. And then obviously, the auditing function, as was alluded to, you, you're, it's only natural that with limited resources, if you're the state, you're only going to look at larger, more complex, multi-jurisdictional organizations and not look at the businesses that many of our city employees interact with on an annual basis. But that means real money to the city of Mesa as we make sure that businesses are complying with their tax burden. So that's, we'll, it'll be interesting to see how this continues to evolve over the next several weeks. There's proposals and counter proposals flying back and forth from both sides as folks try to work on, work on a compromise. There's a compromise that can be reached, but as, as you all know, the legislative process, it's just a question whether folks will be able to come together and do that because we think we can meet the governor's task force goals, but do it in a way that still provides the certainty to cities and towns that we'll be able to have some say in our revenue that's generated locally. Any other questions on that? We'll, of course, keep you updated on that issue in particular. Just wanted to quickly run through a few bills and in particular, talk about more of some of the themes that we see coming out of the legislature in different subject areas. Economic developments, first example. As you've seen over the last few years, legislature's been aggressive in both tax cuts and tax credits, trying to stimulate economic growth within, within the state, excuse me. House Bill 2342 is Speaker Tobin's bill dealing with additional R and D tax credits into the state. And so you see a lot of bills this session that are dealing with not necessarily tax cuts, across-the-board tax cuts, but targeted tax credits or tax incentives to certain industries, trying to incentivize them potentially to relocate to Arizona. And 2342 is an example of some of the legislation coming out. House Bills 2456 and 2514 are both different versions of TIF that will probably not pass the session.
What?
Yes, excuse me, with tax increment financing.
Oh, okay, that's what...
Which is a financing scheme that 49 other states...
It's a tool, not a scheme.
Yes.
Not a scheme.
Yes, excuse me, a tool, an economic development tool. Thank you, Mr. Brady.
We should charge him an extra quarter just for that.
Exactly, the increment on that.
Just lost his cover.
It's a tool that 49 other states have that we do not have, at least as any kind of broad-based authority within the state. And so the last several years now, we have seen more tax increment financing bills introduced at the legislature and I think we'll continue to see some of that over the next few years. Again, I don't think either of these bills will likely pass, but you're starting to see more and more discussion about the use of special taxing districts or other ways that we can provide for infrastructure at the local and state level. The tax credit, the movie tax credit bill is back again this year. Of course, it's a philosophical argument at the legislature about whether you should be doing tax credits towards a particular industry and I think we'll continue to see an interesting debate on that bill. Senator Al Melvin, who represents Tucson and Tucson Studios in particular, is the author of this bill and...
That is interesting that he would be the one offering that.
Right. He's a very conservative member of the legislature, legislature, but he is, he understands the economic impact that movie productions had in Tucson and at Tucson Studios. So that's one of the reasons why he has authored the bill. The, in the development services category, we have, on the development services category, we have SB 1321 is, is another bill from our friends at the Home Builders Association who is looking to preempt cities' abilities to adopt ICC energy codes locally. It declares the adoption of energy codes in construction to be an issue of statewide concern, also says that affordable housing is a statewide concern and tries to preempt cities' discretion that they have on affordable housing. And so as we continue to work through this issue with the home builders, it's yet another situation where we see...
Does it also place limits as to the increase in prices that home builders can charge?
Surprisingly, no, mayor.
Is there a profit cap on this, too? Now, I'm a home builder and I'm saying this, so...
Yes.
These are my friends.
This, this again shows our concern.
And I loved writing the market. I want to tell you that. It was, it was wonderful writing the market. But, all right, go ahead.
Well, and again, I think our position has been that, you know, allowing the market to work if there are certain communities that set higher standards that the market would not bear profitability-wise. I'm sure home builders are going to find another community that, with different regulation, regulations that probably would. And so coming in and causing a statewide concern because of, because of an issue that the industry may have with a particular city or with a group of cities and trying to preempt our local ability to, to set things like energy codes locally is, again, a troubling trend that we continue to see from, from our friends at the legislature, but in certain industries.
Normally, when you see this, it's a statewide interest to enact energy codes. This is a statewide interest to not enact. Okay, I got you.
Well, and in fact, mayor, to that point, it does enact a state energy code. It just sets it at...
Such a low level.
At a low level and says that local, local municipalities can't...
Does it require insulation in buildings?
I'm not sure.
Ten rows.
Ten rows.
Senate Bill 1231 deals, is something coming from the design and architectural community that's concerned that cities indemnification language that we put into, that a lot of cities put into their contracts, that indemnify the city from work that is done on behalf of an architect or others is too oppressive to their, to their industry. So this makes the right, this would make indemnification an issue of statewide concern and that...
So don't do any city work.
Right. And it sets a standard...
And isn't it the free market? Wouldn't the free market be that if you don't like what the city puts in a contract, you just don't work for the city? Okay, I'm sorry. Seems too simple.
It does, it does, mayor. And so the, again, stating that how we write contracts for indemnification is an issue of statewide concern. So it's yet another example of...
As long as they identify.
Of industries, industries working around individual cities and just going straight to the legislature trying to, trying to preempt some local action. On the finance side, it's, it's yet again, some philosophical bills that have unintended consequences. HB 2347 on tax levy and bond costs is put out by some of the, some of the organizations at the Capitol that, that focus on fiscal conserva, that, that concentrate on making sure that cities are living very fiscally constrained. And what they've asked for is for bond, for your tax levy not to exceed your ability to pay your bonds each year. Simple enough, right? But the devil in the detail in this is that when you do like we do in the city of Mesa and set a flat rate for our levy over the life of the bond, saying each year annually that you can only collect enough to, to pay the bonds and debt service on those bonds that particular year has...
So it would disallow the kind of leveling off that we do and subject taxpayers to potential swings in the amount that they pay?
Exactly. So instead of having a more tab...
And that's in favor of how?
We're still, they say through transparency, but, but from a taxpayer standpoint, if you're having...
I thought telling people what they were gonna pay over the next 10 years was fairly transparent because then they get an idea of the real cost rather than low cost early years, high cost later years. That seems to be anti-transparent.
Right.
Because then you approve a bond, you think for the first three or four years, oh, this is great, it doesn't cost me anything. It would seem like our area, our way is much more transparent because the full effect of what the taxpayers just approved is, is right up front. I mean, we let them know. We tell them it might cost $25 and in the first year, it's gonna cost $25. What they would propose, it would cost $2 in the first year and $40 in the 10th year. I made those numbers up, but...
Correct. I think that would be the, and I think a lot of the proponents of the bill, mayor, would not say, well, that's not what we're looking for. We're just looking to have the true cost of what borne out of a taxpayer's...
Which actually supports my question that by only charging $3 in the first year, you're not saying what the true cost is.
Exactly. So it's, it's an academic argument from some of the think tanks and others that, that work on these issues down the legislature that I think actually, as you said, is not in the best interest of the taxpayer when they're looking at more...
Well, it's not even an honest argument, though. If you're, if you're arguing transparency, it's actually, I know what they're saying. Well, transparency is the actual cost, but going, the actual cost is actually the long-term, really, the long-term weighted cost. I, I get what you're saying, but it seems not even to be an honest argument.
Unfortunately, a lot of times, the real-world implications of some of those actions don't come into play. So that's, that's part of the frustrating reality that we deal with when they, when legislation like this is proposed year in and year out, what it, what it truly means versus the academic argument of that. And then lastly, another one-size-fits-all bill with unintended consequences. House Bill 2544 is being put forward by the Arizona Tax Research Association, trying to prohibit a parcel tax that the city of Paradise Valley is levying to provide fire service for, for its residents. They assess a parcel fee to each of their property owners within the city based upon the size of your lot and the square footage of any home or business that's located on that lot. And that pays their fire service that they contract...
It would be basically the same what rural metro charges for fire service, but rather than do it based on valuation, it's based on the parcel.
Correct.
So what is ATRA's problem with this?
They believe that it's, it's really a tax that should be voted on and not an assessment given out by the city. And so it would prohibit a fee, and actually the bill says, or a tax that is, that is levied by parcel. And so they, they believe that...
Even if it was voted upon?
No, they, that they want it to be voted upon.
Okay, if required to be voted upon.
This has been enacted by the town council in Paradise Valley. The problem is, though, that when you blanket preempt any fees or divide by parcel, we have some unintended consequences, whether it be in utilities where we have a flat water fee for each business and homeowner, that's a, that's a flat fee, an initial baseline fee that, and then your usage, a system fee, and then your usage is put on top of that so that those who use more water obviously are paying more and their bill would reflect that. But we have a flat fee that for, as you said, mayor, a system fee. So we're afraid that the way this is drafted right now, it could impact, could impact fees.
And what's the response been to that kind of discussion?
They understand and they're, they're, they're trying to work through it. The question is where...
Okay, now, this is, this is Justin Olson who represents Mesa.
Correct.
Okay. So this is our representative who is pushing something that would damage our city.
So we're, we're hopeful that some of the concerns raised, some of the unintended consequences as people try to go and do a blanket law to affect all cities and towns and covering all fees and taxes when they're trying, when they have a concern about one community in the way that they are paying for their fire service.
And why are they so upset about Paradise Valley? Because all the CEOs that lead ATRA live in Paradise Valley? Sorry, shouldn't have said that.
I'll let you decide that one, so, great. So we'll, we'll move off...
Notice that as you go through this, sort of the blood pressure gets higher and higher as we go through these bills. Sorry about that.
Well, and that's part of the, as we move on to public safety, what we're really trying to do, too, is just give you a flavor of some of the bills coming out of the legislature because that's part of our concern, too, is that, again, you see these themes of preemption, taking away local control, and that's just a frustrating trend that we see year in and year out, but it takes different nuances each year and depending on the category and depending on the type of bill, so...
Yes, and we just have a few more bills that we wanted to bring to your attention. The first, as Scott was mentioning, you know, we just see certain measures, certain bills reoccur every year. Photoradar is one of those measures that pops up every year, thankfully. This bill has failed in the House, on the House Transportation Committee. That does not mean that it won't resurface in a striker or amendment on another bill, but at this point, we feel pretty confident this measure is, is dead for this session. And this is, again, just one of those issues that we view as a local...
Could you explain what a strike all is? Strike everything bill?
Sure, of course. Um, in the beginning of the session, bills will move through, they'll get out of committee, they may decide they know, for exa, okay, I'll back up. This particular measure failed. If Representative Quasman or another member still wanted to see this photoradar prohibition measure move forward, they would find another bill that's still alive in the process and strike all of that language on that bill and replace it with new language.
This language?
Correct. If, in this case, it would be this.
Do the bills have to be the same?
No, not for strikers.
So they could be completely, you could be a bill for...
No, they usually are.
For anything whatsoever, and then they can strike that, put language in for anything else completely differently?
It's transparency.
And that's, and that's state transparency in our process.
And there are some bills that are run just so that they have a...
A vehicle to move.
Well, there are some bills that are run that are never intended to go through the whole process, but they want to make sure they have some bills on the shelf so that at the end, they can go. And you go back to the sponsor, you sponsored a bill and, because I can't go strike your bill, but if you sponsored a bill that is either set up to, to just be a vehicle or that you know it probably isn't gonna pass, I'll come to you and say, and say, listen, let's strike all, and basically we wipe that clean and I just take my language and put it in your bill.
Correct. And again, you know, this, this measure did fail on a two-four vote and we appreciated the comments that were made by the members that opposed the bill stating that we feel this is, you know, a local control issue. And so we were pleased that that message at least resonated that day on this bill. Moving along, House Bill 2554, this is another bill that we've seen in previous years in different variations. This measure would stipulate a statewide firearm locker and signage requirements for all public facilities and events. The signage has to be placed, you know, immediately upon entry. Lockers have to be positioned to where the individual can retrieve their firearm within five minutes. So there's some pretty strict provisions in here. We do not yet know the fiscal impact for the city, how much it would cost us to put fire, excuse me, firearm lockers in all of our facilities and in course, have manpower to staff that, that particular firearm locker.
Councilman Kavanaugh?
Well, this was, bill was introduced by the other Kavanaugh and I just want to confirm, in this year's version of it, would it also subject stadiums to this bill? Because I know there were some differences last year with the stadiums, arenas, things like that, convention centers. Would they be subject to the requirements of this bill this year?
I think in this, in the current vision, or, excuse me, the current version as originally drafted, yes, because the definition, you know, of a public establishment doesn't exclude sporting facilities. Now, that is an issue that we've talked about and discussed in, in years past. Scott, do you have any?
Yeah, mayor and Councilmember Kavanaugh, if, even if it's in the original version, I would expect as it moves through the process that if anything, that would be exempted. I know one of the major sticking points to that, in two years, Glendale will be hosting the Super Bowl. And I know that some of the provisions in the contract with the NFL for Arizona to host the Super Bowl dealt with firearm provisions at University of Phoenix Stadium. And so that was one of the glaring examples that's been used of saying you, you're going to hurt the state economically if... going to hurt the state economically if we fall out of compliance with those contracts.
And we'll explain that because this bill would, would contradict the contract provisions.
Correct.
My guess is that the NFL says no firearms within a certain amount allowed.
Right. Exactly. And we also, and we've heard that, obviously, that's on the biggest stage with the Super Bowl, but then we hear performing arts venues that have performers who have those kind of clauses in their, in their contracts. Some, I believe, at the Mesa Arts Center, and, and others where different performing arts venues around, around the country, and, excuse me, around the state that would have some impact, as the mayor said, on, on compliance with contracts. And so it's just some of the things we need to work through, but, and most importantly, too, it comes with $0 for us to comply with that. I know, I know that's surprising to you all, but it would be, even though we don't have our, our numbers completely squared away, but it will have a fiscal impact on us from a facility standpoint and from, as Miranda said, a manpower standpoint, from our police department or others having to staff those facilities. And, and yet, there's no money coming from the state for compliance with that, so.
Thank you. Next bill, House Bill 2185 relates to alarm businesses and agents. And this bill is a result of a bill that passed and was signed by the governor last session. The intent of this bill was to just clean up some of the language. You may or may not recall that last year, the, the bill that was passed made all alarm licenses, certifications, registrations, a matter of statewide concern. So at the local level, we were no longer able to issue those licenses and so forth to the alarm businesses in our jurisdiction. Within the bill that passed last year, it precluded law enforcement from requiring the necessary information that we need to, to send our officers out safely to an alarm call. There's a number of provisions in this bill. The most important one to us is to try to get that, that language fixed so that when we send our officers out to a call, they know the contact, you know, the address, which, you know, when they call, we would have the address, the phone number, just the basic information for the subscriber so that our officers can respond to the best of, of their ability. There's been a number of issues along the way with, with this bill, but that is the most important provision to Mesa PD, and that's the one that we will continue to work for and see if we can get that moving forward. The next bill, House Bill 2262, scrap metal continues to be an issue in, in our community, the number of thefts, particularly in regard to AC units. And I think last year alone, we had nearly $800,000 in thefts for AC units alone. Last year, there was a measure to help address just the AC unit piece itself and to deter some of those crimes. That bill, that bill ultimately failed. This year, there was an ad hoc committee chaired by Representative Faris of the East Valley, and there were a number of recommendations that came out of that ad hoc study, and some of which were included into this bill, some of which were not. We are working with the sponsor to get a couple provisions added to this bill that we feel will be very helpful to our agency to help combat the, the on-growing problem with scrap metal theft.
And, and Mayor and Council, to that point, that's been a great partnership that we've had, public, with the public sector and the private sector working together. Everyone from APS and SRP has joined with the cities and with law enforcement and with individual business owners. Michael Pollak has been someone who has, has stepped up and talked about the implications on, on his businesses that he owns, or his buildings that he owns throughout the valley. And so we, we're optimistic after years of this bill being defeated by the industry that we might be able, by the scrap metal industry, that we might be able to get something that's workable and helpful to public safety moving forward.
Thank you. Next section, elections. There's been a number of election bills introduced this session, several that are moving forward, most of which apply to statewide elections, including municipal, but, you know, cover all elections within the state. And, you know, most of those are in regard to paid petitioners and the minimum and maximum contribution limits and so forth. The one that I wanted to bring to your attention has to do solely with municipal elections. And this bill, also introduced by Representative Olson, allows for cities and towns to create a new voting system that would allow voters to vote for as many individuals on the ballot as they choose in the primary. And then the top two would move forward to the general election. So instead of current practice of voting for one, it would allow you to vote for as many as you would like. Now, this
Now, is it, is it, wait, is this a, like, what do they call that?
Ranked, excuse me.
Rank them, right?
Yes. Preference voting, ranked voting, it's called different
They use that in Cali, in California, I think, where you vote one through five, or you vote for just one?
Yes.
And it's weighted?
That's correct, Mayor. There have been certain jurisdictions that I think you're alluding to, in the city of San Francisco and the city of Oakland have preference voting. There's been some states that have gone to preference voting. Mr. Olson's bill would just be permissive. It would allow cities to adopt preference voting if they so choose, it wouldn't require it. But just wanted to bring that to your attention because with the multitude of election bills that are flowing at the legislature, that's one that directly impacts us, but it's a permissive impact on, on us, so.
But for us, it would require a charter change?
It would.
Because we're chartered, so that, that, this could apply immediately to non-chartered cities, but for us, it would, we, since our elections are primarily governed by our charter, it would require a charter change?
And that's correct.
Okay. Which we could probably do. Is there a prohibition right now on this in the state? And we could probably do, we could do this, if we wanted to, the voters could, in Mesa, could decide to do this unless there's some prohibition. Doesn't matter, but interesting question.
Yeah, I, I believe state statute is more restrictive on non-charter cities about what, how it prescribes their voting procedure. And so I, I think this is, it wouldn't, as you alluded to, immediately impact non-charter cities.
Moving forward, House Bill 2578. I do need to just mention that this bill is not sponsored by Representative Quasman, that's an error. It's sponsored by Representative Warren Peterson of Gilbert. And this is a bill that creates penalties, including up to a felony, for all government employees who knowingly base a licensing decision in whole or in part that conflicts with the law. I think the first offense is a $500 fine, second offense is a misdemeanor, and then third offense is, is a felony.
Is there an example you could point out as to, I'm trying to think of a situation that is trying, this is trying to cover?
I don't have an example, but Representative Peterson hasn't given specific examples, but it says, you know, on, you know, a couple of occasions, he's gone to various cities in which staffers have told him, you need to, you know, do X, Y, Z, and
That's above and beyond what stated city policy is.
Oh, okay.
So he's saying that, yeah, that, as he's been in industry in multiple jurisdictions throughout the valley, that he sees issues where aggressive staffers and
So you need, you, I won't give you a permit because you need to require, you need to give me five copies of the plan, and the, and the ordinance only says you need to require three copies of a, of a plan.
Correct.
So because you, you made me give you five copies instead of three, you would be in violation of this.
Right. Or we need you to put in this, this much landscaping when your requirements
Six trees instead of three trees.
Exactly.
Gotcha, okay.
So that, so those are some of the concerns that
Okay.
Mr. Peterson is such.
And lastly, Senate Bill 1210 sponsored by Senator Gell Griffin. This is a bill that failed on the Senate floor, 12 to 16, but we still wanted to bring it to your attention. This is a bill that would have required the, the citizen ombudsman aide and/or a independent auditor to investigate city personnel or purchasing policies that have been violated. As such, the state treasurer would require to withhold 10%, 10% of our state shared revenues for the violation. Again, this, this bill died on the Senate floor.
But it got 12 votes?
It got 12 votes, Mayor.
Wow.
It got 12 votes. So, but we just wanted to bring this to your attention is, you know, first of all, this bill, we already have policies in place to address complaints and violations. And secondly, there's no nexus, you know, for the, you know, the complaint and our state shared revenue. So it's, it's just a reoccurring theme sometimes with some of the legislators that, you know, if, if they see an issue over here with cities and towns, they immediately want to withhold our state shared revenue.
And let me, let me be clear. This, this actually got 12 votes?
12 votes, Mayor.
Okay. All right.
So after, after all that fun, let us at least end on a positive note and talk about our friends from Arizona State University. Again, the Arizona State has put forward a budget recommendation this year that includes increased financing and resources into the polytechnic campus. There are some goals that ASU and the other university presidents had worked out as far as per pupil funding parity, performance requirements funding based on performance requirements that had been established in soft capital needs that the facilities throughout the state had needed. ASU, and the good thing to report, ASU put forward a budget request that was incorporated into the governor's budget. And so the governor's budget proposal reflects ASU's proposal as well. And so because of the great partnership that City of Mesa has with ASU on multiple levels and specifically our partnership at the polytechnic campus, we were asked by ASU to express our support for, for that proposal moving forward so that they can continue to tell legislators that cities such as Mesa and Tempe and Chandler and, and everyone else who benefits from ASU's presence in our communities and could, it's important for them to adequately fund institutions of higher learning like ASU. And so what we would ask in staff today, unless we hear any objections from, from council, would be that ASU could continue to say that the City of Mesa supports their request and, and would like to see the, the governor's budget proposal as it relates to higher education funded by the legislature as the legislative budget starts to emerge in the, in the coming weeks.
And is staff's proposal that we support that?
Yes, and it is staff's recommendation that we support that.
All right. Is there any objection to? No objection.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And with that, we'll be glad to take any other comments and questions. I'm, I'm sure there's other bills you've heard about, and you're welcome to ask Miranda and I at, at any time. There's, with 190 impacting us, we just wanted to give you a, a little appetizer of, of the fun.
Just so I'm clear, 12 people voted for Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Okay, gee, all right.
But feel free to contact us at any time if you have, have any questions and, but with that, if there's anything else we could cover this morning, we'll be glad to do
Any questions or, or Miranda or Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is to acknowledge receipt of minutes. Various boards and committees have a motion from Councilmember Glover, a second from the vice mayor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins, you still there?
Oh, yes, sir, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. Here reports on meetings or conferences attended. Councilmember Kavanaugh?
So in report, last night, a number of us went to the annual Governor's Arts Awards, and I'm pleased to report that Southwest Ambulance received the award for Business of the Year at the Governor's Arts Awards. They were nominated by the Mesa Arts Center, and the state recognized them for all the work they do in supporting the arts, not only in Mesa, but in all the communities that they operate. And so it was a, a major award. The president and CEO of Rural Metro was there, and it was a very positive evening. We had other, Mesa Arts Center had been nominated in a different category. One of our employees at Miss Contemporary Arts was also nominated as Arts Individual of the Year. While they didn't win this year, we hope that they will be up on stage next year. But it was a very nice event to see statewide recognition, the governor's recognition of a great company in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, yes, Mayor.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Higgins.
Yeah, I believe that you and I attended the opening of the Vista Pavilion at La Cendus Golf Course the other day.
We did. Go ahead and report on that.
Um, go ahead. It's easier for you to talk because you're there.
Okay.
Sounds better.
Uh, you know, we have, I think one of the things any community needs or meeting place, we have hotel ballrooms, we have reception centers and, and, you know, at all levels. And we just added to that inventory up at La Cendus. The, the owners of the, and operators of the golf course up there just built a beautiful 7,000 square foot facility, which is right there at the La Cendus Golf Course, and it has a wrapped patio, and we, we're up there for the ribbon cutting right around sunset. And it's an amazing view of the entire valley. You can even see the buildings down in downtown Phoenix. And if, if you haven't been up there, it's, it's a great example of when people come in and they invest, they, they put a lot of money into upgrading the facilities there at, at La Cendus, the restaurant there, Bogies, and I think there's actually three different concepts right there. And I'd like to give plugs to people who invest in our community, and Lloyd McBean and his, and his partners have really done a good job in investing quite a bit of money into creating a very classy, a very classy establishment there, high quality. So I had the privilege, as Councilmember Higgins said, of attending their, their ribbon cutting. So congratulations to them and thanks to them for making those kind of investments. So if you've got a daughter or son or somebody, I guess it would be a daughter that would plan that. It's a great place for a wedding reception or a business meeting or a community meeting or something like that. Did that cover it all?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to remind everyone, this is a busy weekend downtown Mesa this Friday. We have the second Friday night out in downtown Mesa. There'll be live bands, food and entertainment. And then also Saturday is Mesa Rocks Block Party from 2:00 to 10:00. So we invite everybody to come down this weekend to downtown Mesa. Our next day's session will be Thursday, March 14th.
What kind of rocks are they going to have?
Music rock.
Oh, that's music rock. I'm sorry. I was wondering. Any requests to speak for the public?
No requests, Mayor.
Have a motion to enter an executive session from Councilmember Kavanaugh, a second from Councilmember Glover. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are moving into executive session. Thank you.